Hello, I'd like to call to order our regular meeting for the Rossmore Community Service District. Today is Tuesday, August 13, 2013. Let's have a roll call, please.
Director Coletta?
Here.
Director Casey?
Here.
Director Kahler?
Here.
President Maynard?
Here. Let's all stand and pledge allegiance to a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the righteous stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 8-4, administer oath of office to new director. Mr. President, members of the board, at the June 11, 2013, regular meeting, Director Jeffrey Rips resigned with a remaining unexpired term that ends in December 2016. In accordance with Government Code, Section 1780, the remaining board members may fill a vacancy by appointment. During a special meeting held on July 11, the minutes are attached in this meeting's agenda, the board interviewed candidates. After the conclusion of interviews and a discussion of the candidates' qualifications, the board unanimously appointed Mr. Tony DiMarco, effective August 13, tonight, to fill the remaining unexpired term of Director Rips through December 2016. At this time, I recommend that you administer the oath of office to Mr. Tony DiMarco and welcome him aboard.
Gladly.
Could I tell him to look over your shoulder at this service not allowing me to connect? Just sit right there. Get this over here.
Tony, why don't you come on up? Raise your right hand. I?
I, Tony DiMarco.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
At this point, we're going to invite Director DiMarco to come up to the dais and take a seat. It's time to get some work done, okay?
Okay. Let's go.
First of all, we have Orange County Sheriff Lieutenant Robert Gunzle to provide the quarterly crime statistics.
Thank you very much. Okay, for the quarter, second quarter of 2013, good news is we're trending down with the crime stats. June of 2013, we show five part-one crimes. As you see, we've got a legend for the, at the bottom here.
Thank you for that.
At your request, we put this legend in, and I think it explains very well. Our biggest crimes, four of them, are petty thefts. And just to go into a little bit of detail on the petty thefts, and we've talked about this at the last quarter meeting I was at, several of the petty thefts, at least four out of the five, were due to unlocked vehicles. One was a UPS package taken off a front porch. The other ones were unlocked trunk, unlocked vehicle, open garage, unlocked vehicle. So, again, I think, all things considered, this is a pretty good month. Had these cars been locked, I'm gonna say there would not have been any crime, but, you know, we may have got away with our June stats, or correction, our July stats as being one on the 48s. I just got, as of today, the July stats, just to add to that, we're still in single digits, but we're at nine, and I don't have the detail on that one yet. Nine total part-one crimes for July of this, which is down from last year. July numbers were 18, and the last June 2012 numbers were at nine. So, actually, the last three months have all been down from last year's totals. And to discuss, I know it's on the next agenda item, to discuss the matter of unlocking your vehicle, and something else we discussed last quarter I was here, is some crime prevention measures. So, I've invited our crime prevention specialist to come to a presentation for you folks. Is there any questions before we get on to that?
I have one, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is this on? Okay. And June is obviously a lot better in terms of the total numbers, as you just pointed out.
Right.
But currently, with a total of 96 for half the year, assuming the second half of the year is somewhat close in terms of statistics, we'd end up with over 190 incidents, and, you know, which would like set it, from what I know, an all-time record for our community. So, do you believe the trend is down, and that hopefully people are being more careful, and we're not going to set the unwanted record?
Well, I'm hoping we're trending down. And for summertime, you know, for June, for five part-one crimes, that's pretty outstanding. And it is, you know, I don't want to take, well, it's because of the hard work the deputies are doing, obviously, I'd like to take credit for that, but on the other end, if crime stats are up, I'd have to say my deputies aren't doing a good job. So, I think there's an ebb and flow of things, and hopefully?
Right.
We're trending down, and we won't get to the 163 that we had last year.
Right, 'cause I also noticed, like, vehicle break-ins and thefts, if I read this correctly, the total number for this year already exceeds the total of all of last year.
For?
For vehicle thefts, I think that's?
Oh, thefts from vehicles.
459V?
Yeah, 459 vehicles.
Right, somebody like not locking their car, et cetera.
Right. And some of that, it may be that someone attempted to get into a car and didn't make, or made entry, didn't steal anything, it's still considered a vehicle burglary. And as you see, in January, we had 10 alone. Totally unacceptable in my book, but had we had a better month of January, we wouldn't be looking at the numbers we have now.
Exactly, you're right, it's trending down, so...
So, that's what I'm hoping, to keep it going the way it is.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, I'm very encouraged by this report, especially what you detailed verbally on the July. July over last July, down, over June, down, over May, down. And then, if you actually look at our peak, well, not our peak, but of the 18 crimes in March, every month is going down, so...
Right.
So, whatever you're doing, thank you. But I do have one question. Does this also include, if you had to gauge, if it was a different, a different currency, if it was calls, is our call activity down as well, or is call activity up?
That's hard to judge, because the number of calls are so diverse, I mean, from car, if I were to look all the CAD detail from Rossmore, it would just be overwhelming, because of the current amount of car stops. Ones that aren't part-run crimes, which is domestic violence and medical things like that, someone have committed suicide or something like that, I mean, that's not something we're going to report on. So, I don't look at those numbers, but I, I know right now, I have an aggressive group of deputies here, so that would be a lot of car stops and things like that. So, a number of calls, if I was looking at CAD detail, I can pull just straight numbers, but it'd be too hard to call through and say, okay, we had 87 car stops in this month, and, you know, I can do it, but it's just a lot of work. So, I mean, if that's something that you want me to do for next quarter, I can certainly do that.
I was just curious about people picking up their phone and calling, because, I'm just going to put this out to the community, is, our sheriffs have a job to do, but so do we. We have to be vigilant. When you see something that doesn't look right, you need to pick up the phone and call. This should be a cooperation between citizens, as well as your force.
And you're stealing an E2 Thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Any other questions?
Yeah, so what would you attribute the decrease to?
Like I said, I would like to say, 'cause my deputies are being very aggressive out there, and there's a couple in particular, in fact, when you, when you gauge deputies' aggressiveness with the amount of complaints I get, that, that kind of goes hand in hand. I'll just give you an example, one of the deputies stopped and cited a gentleman for soliciting. He was adamant that he was not soliciting. When my deputy watched, I had to pull the report before I called him and took his complaint. Deputy watched him go from house to house to house, pulled him over, gave him a ticket. It became a big, he called the sergeant out because the guy refused to sign the ticket.
Wow.
To me, good, he's out there working. Yeah, I have to take the complaint, but, and I tell him, you want, you know, my deputies are out there working, I'm not going to begrudge them from, so I, I would like to say, but like I said, on the other half, I'd have to say, well, they're not doing a good job when the crime stats are up. So, I think it's a combination of things that are trending down, and we, we just recently completed a six-month audit for the entire sheriff's department, and all crime stats are down, with the exception of auto thefts right now for our department, so I think it's a trend. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is OC Crime Specialist Anitu Petanik.
Petanik.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
She's going to talk about crime prevention and summer safety.
Yes. Okay, so... Do I put it on?
I can just announce one for you, if you'd like.
Oh, okay, here we go. There we go. Okay, so the first thing I'm going to talk about is safety at home, because, you know, it is summer, and, you know, we like to work outdoors, and we like to, you know, host barbecues and relax by the pool, but just keep in mind, when you are doing all these activities, you know, in your front yard and your backyards, be, be aware of your surroundings. A lot of the time, we leave our garage doors open, and while we're mowing the lawn, and we want to make sure that, that's not the case, because someone can walk right in and take your belongings. And the other important thing about people walking into your garage is, you know, the door that goes into your home from the garage, you want to make sure that's always locked at all times, because if someone walks right in, they can go right into your home as well. So, not only is your garage in risk, but your home is as well. So, make sure you lock your doors, whether it's, you know, you're relaxing by the pool, or, you know, hosting a barbecue. In these hot months, we want to keep our windows open, just make sure you, you lock them up before you, you know, go out for the evening, or go out for the day. A lot of the times, people think if you have a double-story house, you're, you know, you open the top windows, you're safe, but you're actually not, because people have used ladders to get into the top windows, so you guys have to be careful. And then the shrubbery, landscaping, a lot of people put the plants in the front and trees for privacy, and just keep in mind that when you're making it private for yourself, you're also making it private for people jumping in, you know, bad guys, bad girls, whatever, can jump right in, and then they're hidden, they're like, you know, they can go right in, and no one will see them, so if your neighbors can't see your front yard, then, you know, it's not as safe. And then knock-knock burglaries, I wanted to talk a little bit about that. That has been a trend lately. People, they work in groups, and usually, one comes, knocks on your door, and the other, like, if you answer, they'll talk to you, distract you, then suspect number two will sneak in through your door. Sometimes they possess contractors, maybe like a roofer, they'll tell you, "Come on, come on out here, let me show you the roof, it needs some work." So, you guys have to be vigilant, and just make sure you don't get conned into stuff like that. So, the other thing I wanted to talk about was senior safety. There's a lot of senior frauds and scams going on, and just, we should just be careful out there. If it looks too good to be true, it probably is. Always do your research, if it sounds, like I said, too good, then, you know, look it up, look online, there's so many different sources you can, you know, do. One of the big things right now is banks are emailing you, but they're not real banks, they're just, it's just fraud, they're trying to get all your information, so if you, if there's ever a doubt, call the bank, call, you know, 1-800 numbers, call the customer service. If you're unsure, never give out your personal information, that's key, never give out your personal information, and just because it's on the internet does not mean it's true. So, it's vacation time right now, so I thought I'd talk a little bit about vacation time. Make sure that when you're away, your home is secure. You want to stop your mail and newspaper, or have someone pick it up, just because if it piles up, then everyone knows you're not home, including the bad people. So, you know, you want to hide all your valuables, a lot of the time, this happens a lot during Christmas time, when, like, people like to display their trees in their windows and have presents all over, but, you know, they may be empty boxes just for decor, but not everyone knows that, bad people don't know that, so hide all your valuables, that goes as well for cars, like Lieutenant Gunzle was saying. If you have a laptop, put it in your trunk, take it inside, don't leave it in plain sight, your purses, anything, just put it away. If I can see it, if the bad people can see it, they want it, they'll take it, they don't care about breaking windows, they don't care. You can make sure to secure all windows and doors, including the animal doors, a lot of the time, people go on vacation and forget about their doggy doors, people climb through them, in them, through them, yeah. So, make sure you lock those up, install motion sensors and timers for lights, 'cause you want to make sure that it appears that somebody is in the home. A lot of the times, you can even use timers on radios, which is nice, because it sounds like someone's home. And the best part, you can call us to do a vacation check, we do that, it's a free service, you guys can call our dispatch number, and just let us know you guys are going on vacation, and deputies will check your home twice a day, once in the morning and once in the evening, and they do a whole perimeter check, make sure all the windows and doors are locked. And now, we can do it online through the?
Vacation check.
Vacation check through Rossmore website.
Right.
Okay, so, and then I thought I'd add traveling safely in there. If you guys are going on vacation, be sure, you know, you have a plan, you know, if you are going to fly somewhere, make sure you have a transportation, means of transportation, just don't wing it, you know, if you're going to take a taxi, a cab, or, you know, bus, whatever it is, avoid tourist traps and danger zones, do your research, you know, the internet is great for doing research and traveling, and knowing where, you know, if it's a dangerous spot, so don't make yourself an easy target. The next thing I wanted to talk about was when to call 911. So, 911 is for life-threatening things, and then things that are happening currently, like in progress, like if there's a mugging going on, and you see it, call 911. And then, non-emergency numbers, you want to do that when, you know, it's like a general information, or you have a question, or, you know, you're complaining about noise at your neighbor's house, parking issues, and stuff like that. So, when should you call for a deputy? Anything, when you see anything suspicious, unusual activity, I think we had mentioned something about solicitors, you see solicitors, they don't belong in the neighborhood, by all means, call. And if you're confused whether you should call 911 or the non-emergency, just call 911, and we can always transfer you, it's not a big deal. You want to make sure, like, if, you know, examples I put up there, someone peering into your cars, a lot of the time, people are looking for your valuables, if they see them, they're going to break into your cars, you don't want people looking into your home windows, so if, you know, you see someone at your neighbor's house, and you see someone looking in, you want to call. Unknown utility vehicles, if you hear gunshots, and, you know, suspicious behavior, you want to call. So, I have a little pop quiz, so when should you call 911? If there's a crime in progress, like a burglary, a robbery, physical assault, or if it's life-threatening, emergency, fire, stuff like that, that's all, call 911. All the lower ones would be okay to call the non-emergency number. But like I said before, if you guys are confused, if you're panicked, just call, just call 911, it's not a big deal. In fact, real quick, I just wanted to share something, I actually had to call 911 myself in my neighborhood, because I saw some suspicious-looking solicitor walking around from house to house, didn't look like he was selling anything, and just wasn't dressed like, you know, like he was selling anything, so I called 911. We live in a different district, so our people didn't answer the phone, and, and they kind of were like, "Oh, why are you calling 911? That's not an emergency," but it's okay, they transferred me anyway, so it's not a big deal. You know, I didn't feel safe, so I called, so, like I said, call 911 if you have to. The other thing, when you call 911, you have to have good observation skills. So, people, we want to make sure we know what they're wearing, how are they acting, what do they look like, you know, like, are they doing anything, like, repeatedly, or it's, it seems like it's easy, but it kind of takes some practice. So, I'm going to test you guys, so take a look at this guy right here, and just think about him, and take a look, and tell me, what did you guys see? Can you guys describe that guy to me? What was he wearing? What color was his hair? Was he wearing shorts, or was he wearing a T-shirt? Anyone? Come on!
He needs a fashion consultant.
Good. What's that?
He needs a fashion consultant.
Yeah, that's true. So, I put, like, these little arrows, his shirt, he's wearing two shirts, he's wearing a white shirt, a red flannel shirt, his pants are rolled up a little bit, he's wearing black boots, it looks like. He has an unusual piece of jewelry, a bolo tie or something on. I put some other things, does he have facial hair, tattoos, visible hats, hairstyles, glasses? Just the better you describe, oh, let me go back, sorry, the better you guys describe, the better it is for our deputies to find the person. And keep in mind, like, this guy could look like this when you see him, but if he's running, he could take his jacket off, he could take his shirt, he can just wear the white shirt then. So, we want to make sure if the deputies are told, "Oh, he's wearing a red flannel," they won't, they won't see that he's wearing a white shirt, if someone is walking down the street wearing a white shirt, they won't suspect that this is the person, so make sure you're observing and get all that. So, I wanted to show you this picture real quick, and wanted to ask you guys, what, what did you guys think was going on for observation skills?
...
Yeah, radical, yeah, yeah, it looks like that, so I just put, where was it, what time of day was it, you know, who was there, how many people were there? You know, was it a male driving, a female, was someone in the car? We can take a look at that picture again, I, I'm not sure, this, I don't know where we got this picture. But it was just to illustrate, you know, like, an emergency situation, and how we should be observant. And that's all I have for today, so, does anyone have any questions?
Pardon my naivete, but what do you consider to be a tourist trap?
Something like, you know, for example, in Hollywood, they have Star Map Homes of all the stars, they're, who knows if those are really the star homes, and stuff like that, like, where you probably know it's probably too good to be true, it probably is, or they have fortune tellers, you know, things like that, tourist traps.
Yeah, I got you.
I've got a question. In my phone, I had the old numbers being 714-704-7900, and the phone number you gave was 714-647-7000.
That's the, that's the non-emergency, general information.
The 7000 number's the new number?
Yeah.
That's been a number for...
Okay, so the number that I have is like many years, I don't even know what that is, okay?
What about the 527-9100? We have that as the non-emergency number on our...
That would be 647.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have, we do have those numbers and other numbers on our website, under Helpful Links.
Okay. So, we should, the question closes out.
Right, we do have the 647 on there.
Oh, okay, perfect, okay. Okay, but you're going to take your hand.
I have one question.
Uh-huh.
This is an outstanding presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Is it appropriate for us to put this on our website? Are you guys comfortable with it? I don't want trademark issues or any intellectual property here, but...
No, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, she owns it.
I'm okay with it, yeah.
Liz, can you work with her and put this on our website as a resource?
Sure.
Thank you.
And then I, I could actually give Liz some other, like, vehicle security and other information that you could probably put up on the website as well.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to make one comment, I'm Dorothy Fitzgerald, Sheriff of the Rossmore Homeowners Association's Neighborhood Watch Committee, and I'd like to thank both Lieutenant Gunzle and Anitu for being here this evening. You asked this evening about possible traffic stops, information on that, is that, is that, am I correct in saying that you were asking Lieutenant Gunzle for that type of thing?
I was actually more interested in the call volume of people calling in.
Oh, the call volume, okay, all right. Just for your information, each week, I do prepare a Rossmore crime report, it's based on the sheriff's online blotter. Good to remind us that the data reported records the initial emergency reported by the caller, and it sometimes happens that the actual circumstances at the scene differ from those given in the initial report. On this weekly crime report, which goes to the RHA board members, to the RCSD board members, to 45 RHA neighborhood block captains, and to others, different calls are listed, but also, the number of traffic stops is listed, the number, not each, not each incident, and the number of suspicious vehicle and person calls. I just happened to grab this one for the last week in June, that week, there were five traffic stops by deputies, there were 14 suspicious vehicle person calls, so I think I would like to believe that the community is becoming more aware. Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Actually, Dorothy, real quick, do you also track Highway Patrol, because I know they come in here from time to time, have they been open with discussing stats and monthly basis?
You know, I, I don't, I don't track those, because, number one, they're not in here as often as they used to be.
Okay.
And, number two, they're really here for traffic and accident matters, not...
Crime.
Crime, other crime, let's put it that way.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a presentation from Orange County Register reporter, Mr. Asher Klein.
Hi. I'm Asher Klein, I'm the new reporter for Los Alamos, Seal Beach, and Rossmore, and I was invited here tonight to tell you a little bit about what we're going to be doing in the area in terms of newspaper coverage. We've got a couple new newspapers that we're going to launch, so we're kind of excited to tell you a little bit about that. I'm not a salesman, I normally stand on the other side of the podium, so this is a little new for me, so bear with me a little bit. Before I get to the newspapers, a little bit about me, I'm Ash, Asher Klein, as I said, I'm from New York City, I went to school in Chicago where I worked at a newspaper, before I moved out here and covered Huntington Beach, Costa Mesa, and Newport Beach. Now, I just want to ask you guys, I can open it to everybody, just by a show of hands, does anyone subscribe to the Register? Couple people.
Hey.
Good, cool, great. I'm not here to ask you to subscribe, but I want to know, does anyone subscribe to the Press Telegraph? the Press Telecam? Okay, great, we like them too. But we are launching next week, on Monday, a local paper in Long Beach that's going to be, it's not aimed to take them down, it's aimed to sort of give them a little bit of competition. We think we can do a better job up there with a daily paper. I don't know if it's going to be seven days, or six days, or five days, but there's going to be 10 pages of coverage, lots of color photos, lots of stuff on high school sports and, and, you know, new businesses, all that kind of information that's going to, that we think appeals to people and sort of is what they want to know about their community. We're also launching, also next week, on the 19th, no, the 23rd, The Pier, which is going to be covering Seal Beach, Los Al, and Rossmore. I'll be the reporter for that, and I've left my business card over there. I've given you guys, hopefully through Elizabeth, my card as well. And we're actively soliciting any stories from anybody watching at home, wherever, that they think is interesting. We, our motto is, throughout the Register now and the community sections, is we never say no to news. If it's interesting, if it's weird, we'll take it. My contact information is in the Register every day in the Our Town section. You can also grab a business card. It's Aklein, A-K-L-E-I-N, at ocrregister.com. Just write in, let us know what's going on. I've written a bunch of stories for the other papers. I'll be the main reporter along with a team of other people at The Pier, and we've got a lot of great things for the first couple of issues that we've planned out. But we want to hear from you guys, what we, we think we'll do best when we know what you want to cover and can look into it, whether it's, again, whether it's government stuff or not, whether it's school stuff. We love that stuff. There's also over there, for anyone here, you can go to ocrregister.com if you're not, but we've got some great papers, examples from all over the county of newspapers that do this, just this kind of thing that we're going to be bringing to the area. We also just, I don't want to keep dragging it on, but we're going to be soliciting for our opinion section, any opinions from you guys on anything that has to do with the area, Rossmore, Seal Beach, Los Al. One potential topic you could write about that comes to mind is how we cover Rossmore in the daily paper. I know that's come up a little bit, whether or not it's, it should be its own section in the Our Towns. We'd be happy to have you guys submit something on that. The best way to do that would be to email me, because I don't have the contact information for everybody else, but I'll put you in touch with the person who handles our opinion section. We're looking for that, we're looking for P, we have a faith and values section on anything that's going on in the religious community or, or in the nonprofit community. I don't know if you know this, but at least Los Alamos, which includes a healthy chunk of Rossmore, is the, has the most nonprofits per capita in the county, and you guys do a lot of great work that I'm excited to highlight. We've got a school section, we're going to be covering the great Los Alamos Unified School District. I believe you can look in tomorrow's Daily Paper for an article that I'll have co-written on that. And we've got a sports section with a really great sports writer who's excited to be talking about the Burgenay Hockey League in Los Al Unified School, and the high school, and all kinds of other great stuff. So we've got a lot, again, we've got a lot of great stuff planned. We'd love to hear from you about anything at all. I've written stories about a coyote biting a baby in Cyprus. I've written stories about guys who dive to the bottom of the ocean to recover nets that keep fishing even though they've, they've been cut loose from the boats. I've written stories about a girl who's, who died of brain cancer but whose brain matter has, has gone on to do a lot of research that researchers are hopeful will stop a deadly disease. So we've, we've got a lot of great people on the team as well, and we're excited to be covering Rossmore and Seal Beach and Los Al. So that's it. If anyone has any questions, obviously from you guys, and anyone back there, happy to take them.
Well, I would say one topic that would be great to, great to cover, and too bad you weren't here last night.
I was.
Was the, oh, you were great, so that's a, so that's a great topic.
We, yeah.
He's doing his job, man. He's working it.
I was, I was hanging out, I was hanging on the back, yeah.
I think, I think that'd be a great topic to keep on the pressure and to really explore because I think it's undercovered right now.
Yeah, I've got a little bit planned for the, the paper, and we have a really good reporter who's working on the shutdown, a story of the shutdown, of the 20-hour shutdown of the four or five this weekend. But I know that the, the other project is separate, and it's another big issue that you guys believe hasn't been handled right, and I'm hoping to keep track of it.
What was the name of the Long Beach paper, the new?
That's the Long Beach Register.
The Long Beach.
And there's stuff about it out online. I think USA Today covered it, some other, The Guardian covered it. Yeah.
I have something.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for coming, and thank you for all that information. Another reason that I wanted to invite you here was to request that Rossmore could have its own section under the Our Town section of the Register, and I can assure you that between us and the Rossmore Homeowners Association that we'd have plenty of activity and news to report, and I hope that you strongly consider that.
I, the request has come through to me, and I've talked to my editor about it.
There's just confusion.
There's confusion.
You know, sometimes we're under Seal Beach, sometimes we're under Los Alamos, and it's confusing to...
I know, it's tough. You and a couple of other communities have that problem. We can talk about that later, for sure. I know that if you guys, if you feel like we don't address it satisfactorily, please write that.
I just think it's confusing to report Rossmore under Los Al or Seal Beach.
I can understand that. We can talk about that later.
Okay, great.
Anything else?
Very good.
Thank you so much. Moving on, we don't have any additions to the agenda that I'm aware of. Gentlemen, any additions?
Nothing.
Okay, now it's time for public forum. Any person may address the Board of Directors at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of the Rossmore Community Service District. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff at the discretion of the Board for a report and action at a subsequent meeting. So we'll open it up to the public. Okay, no one's rushing to the, to the podium, so we'll move to our consent calendar.
Well, I'll motion the consent calendar in its entirety, 1A, B, and C, 2, 3, 4, and 5 to be approved.
I'll second.
Sorry. I'd like to hold two, two items on here.
Okay, perfect. That's why, that's why we do this.
I didn't realize we were going to go into...
That's why we do it.
Okay. I want to pull items three and four for a couple of questions.
Okay.
Take it away, sir.
Okay. So...
It's kind of three, E3.
In the...
That's quarterly status report.
The quarterly status report. There was the issues regarding parking problems around the shops.
Can you, can you say which section, you know, 1A or 2B?
You know what, let me try to get to it. I have it written down on here, but I, I'd have to actually bring it up on here to get it, so bear with me for a second.
You can tell us the page, that'll be helpful as well, Director.
Uh, yeah, well, I...
He has notes, he's going off.
I just have my notes, but I can find it.
That's fine. No, go ahead, go ahead, ask the question, that's fine.
Okay, while I'm trying to find it. The question is this. We, we had a committee meeting relating to the parking problems and had the county in, and they were telling us what we could and could not do, and you've, you've done a lot of work on this, and, and now you've, you've brought it to Seal Beach, and what they've done is they're requiring a conditional use permit, which has unfavorable terms for using the shops at Rossmore Parking Lot.
Correct.
I believe your comment was that you already talked to the, their city manager, and I don't know who else, and you're planning on talking to the council members about this.
Correct.
And so it's like, whatever this conditional use issue is, I mean, that just sounds to me, I'm, like, they're not being a good neighbor, and if, if you need anybody to help you in talking with the council to maybe come to some resolution about this, because this problem's been going on for a while, and I consider it a pretty serious issue, that if I can be of any help on, when you talk to them, or if I just be getting in your way, just let me know, but...
No.
That's my issue on this.
Okay.
I'm going to add some clarity for people who don't understand what Ron was asking.
It's on page three.
It's on page three, but not everybody has...
Item 8C.
They don't have one.
Page three, but basically what's going on is we have condos up along Montecito Avenue. One of them has its parking act really together. They have enough spaces for the occupants who are there, and that's actually within Rossmore. We then have three or four other condos that are technically part of Seal Beach, and there's not adequate parking for those condo residents to park there without flooding onto the streets. In the past, they have parked in the shops of Rossmore over by where the theater used to be, or call it Behind Sprouts, that parking lot there. The owner, or a new owner who's owned the property for maybe 18 months, decided he didn't want any liabilities and didn't want people parking back there, so he put flyers on people's cars saying, "We'll tow you, we'll ticket you if you keep parking here. Please don't park in our property." Well, when that happens, where do they park? Well, if the one side of Montecito's completely parked, they go to the other side, and if there's not enough, they then go into all the other arterial streets up and down Rossmore. They have parked in front of people's garages and driveways so they can't get to work on time, and it has been a very big mess. So we created a sub-ad hoc committee to work on this issue and see if we can somehow come to some resolve. One of the things that we did is we contacted AEW, the owner of the property, and got them to kind of put a stay, or say, "Okay, I won't be as hard." So that kind of fixed it temporarily. We approached them saying, "Maybe there could be a solution that you take some of that parking and convert it into a permit system. Maybe you can make a little bit of money off it. Maybe the other condo associations might pick up a tab, maybe the individual parkers might." So he was willing to look at that until zoning from Seal Beach came back and said that's inappropriate, and no, you can't do it. So I'm not sure if Seal Beach, obviously, it doesn't help us. We get involved with these type of things, even though it might not be part of our jurisdiction, but we're here, and when something goes wrong, they pick up the phone, we have staff, so we try to do whatever we can to help the public by working with Seal Beach, myself calling the mayor, and doing whatever it takes to see if we can at least step in. And we are trying to fix the problem, but we are just more of an affected area than the problem itself, and it's something that we continue to work on, and hopefully someday it could be resolved. But right now, unfortunately, what is the main cause is one of the condos used to be an apartment, and way back in the late 60s, early 70s, they converted them into condos, and the parking spots were deeded, which means it came with one, but if you wanted to buy five more, you could. Well, enter to where we are now in the future, you've got people who use that as rental property, rent it to four college students going to Cal State Long Beach, only one of them has a parking spot, and then the rest of them are on the street. So unfortunately, there is a big problem on the desk of Seal Beach, and I'm trying to get together with Councilman Sloan to see, figure out how I can support him and see if he would champion his constituents to solve the problem. But just so everyone knows what he pulled out, because Bill's going, "What is he talking about?" That's what he's talking about, so I just want at least everyone to know as much as we do.
Also, I'd just like to add that Orange County Planning Department and Orange County Sheriff's representative as well offered to implement a restricted parking program, but at that meeting that we had last quarter, some of the residents objected to that, and they said they would prefer to try and work something out with the shopping center, but that's still an option. We may want to do a survey of the affected residents in the near future to see if, one resident called, and he said that he was all for having restricted parking, where there would be no parking between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, but of course, there's some residents that would oppose that.
And again, if we took on that option, which is a serious option, it still doesn't fix the problem because now they can't park there, they're still going to have to park somewhere. The problem doesn't go away, so this is a...
It's not a fix.
This is one of those hard...
If it's enforced, they would stop parking.
This is one of those hard problems that we're trying to work cooperatively with our, our neighbors to trying to figure out, there has to be some fix, and we're, we're hoping that maybe the county could, or not the county, but their Public Works can work with the building owner, because he seems to be, or at least have in possession, a possible fix. But it's all zoning and cooperation, and how many spaces to retail footprint and all that kind of stuff, so.
That's a difficult issue.
Yeah.
But to, to shorten this up, if I can be of assistance, please let me know.
Okay.
I mean, I realize I'm already on the committee, but be that as it may. So, okay, moving on to item E4, which I, I now have in front of me, so I don't have to keep searching around.
4E.
It's on page 81 of 123.
Good.
Status of Rossmore covered parkways. And the only question I have is on the four homes that have the hardscape, where we had a previous board meeting, it's a little over a year ago, where we vetted all four homes. I think only maybe one out of the four people showed up, and the others, we had, we rendered the decision that they would have a tree planted in front of their home, and now the comment from the county, Public Works, is that they will not do anything with those four homes, and they're saying they're bringing the problem back to the RCSD for further resolution. Well, there really can't be any further resolution because the county is responsible for doing this now. You know, if they give it back to us, that, all that means to me is that they're saying no, and that's it. Is that how you interpret that?
Actually, we have an update. One of the four has now been allowed for the county to clear and will be made available for tree planting in the near future. So that leaves us with three, and did you want to comment on those, Mary, or?
Please come forward.
Mary Kingman's our Tree Program Assistant.
Hi. So, just like you said, the position of the county is that they're not going to do anything about this because the residents, I don't know if they, whether or not they came to this meeting, they might have also had their own dealings with the county where they protested the planting of the tree, so their position is...
Possibly, I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it either, but it is possible. I know one of the other residents did come to the meeting, and a representative of another one, the one that's now being planted, did come. So I don't know about the other two, how the county even got their information that they were protesting it, but...
But the county is saying that resident approval is needed to...
They're saying written or verbal consent from the resident is needed before they will clear the parkways.
Oh, I see, so that means if the RCSD gets involved, we'd have to go back to the homeowners and have to get their consent.
Exactly.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Which obviously is pretty unlikely if they've been fighting it all along.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And by covered, we mean covered by concrete or brick?
Or other shrubbery.
Other hardscape, yes.
Yeah, sometimes shrubbery too, so.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's perfect. The rest, I mean, you've done a wonderful job on this too, but...
Oh, thank you.
This is marvelous, you know, to get this far, and it's like, not that I'm considering this a roadblock, but I just don't want the community to get, to get the idea that if it's okay for these folks, it's okay for everyone else.
Yeah, so...
We had 21 originally, correct?
Right, and we're down to like, I guess, three now, so, no.
Yeah, there's three.
Excellent work.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, since you're out there, how are our trees doing?
The trees are doing great.
Are they?
Yeah, they are.
I know that you and I've talked about problems that are with liquid amber.
Yeah.
Are there any other concerns that we should have about some of, I know that currently we track the new trees, the ones that are completely diseased and need to be removed, but how about just sick trees? Do we have a grasp of what's going on, so if there is a tree that needs extra loving or medicine or something like that, we can take care of it?
Yes, all the trees are evaluated constantly, so with, when WCA comes through with their grid trimming, which Rossmore is divided into the four sections, and each grid is trimmed once a year, besides that, we also do transfer as needed, and there's quite a lot of those being done. Also, the county also will do safety trims, so along with all of the tree trimmers and myself looking at the trees, they're constantly being looked at, and there are, there are issues with diseases going around, and there's some white elders that are getting a disease. I've had three of them die in the last couple of months, so we just have to keep an eye on them, and just, like, the liquid ambers too, so that's the best we can do, is just keep an eye on them. They're not diseases that can be contained or cured, they're just, they can only be watched and possibly the tree removed if need be.
Okay.
So, that's the best we can do, is keep an eye on them.
Right.
Okay?
Which is a great time to remind everyone that if they're concerned about the tree in their parkway, to please contact the Rossmore Community Services District before taking matters in their own hands.
Yes, that would be before trimming.
Yeah.
Anything, you know, they need to contact us, and we can take care of it for them, or if it falls under where it's needing a trim. If, you know, sometimes they don't, and they just will have to wait till it does qualify for a trim, so people have their own ideas of when a tree needs trimming, so.
Correct. One last question, since you're up here, because this will be helpful for me personally, and probably for others. How often do you recommend the deep soaking and all of that? What's the technique to take care of your tree the best? Because obviously, our trees are beautiful. I want my tree to survive, not just the ones on my property, but even the one that's in front of my house on the parkway. What's the best way of doing that?
In the summer, if it's hot, it hasn't been hot this summer, but usually when it's...
Weekly, daily?
No, a couple times a month.
Just a couple times?
For an established tree is fine, a deep soaking. For an established tree, a young tree, less than five years old, probably, you know, maybe three times a month, if it's hot. And when it's the rainy season, cool season, even less. And just, you can kind of gauge the soil and see how dry it is, stick a stick down there and dig it up a little, and you can tell. If the tree starts looking droopy, the leaves start looking brown, it probably needs more water. So, you're just going to have to watch the tree, and, you know, it's different for every tree, so, and different soil types, different weather, so there's not a clear-cut formula, but you just kind of have to watch it and get to know your tree.
Get to know your tree, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I have nothing further.
Okay, there was a motion out there by Director Colletta, I believe you seconded, Bill?
I did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. Tonight, we do not have public hearings resolutions, but we are on Section 8, Regular Calendar. H1 Citizen Request, Appeal of Illegal Tree Removal Fine.
Mr. President, members of the Board, on April 26th, 2013, Rossmore resident Mr. Steve Wixer of 2901 Copo de Ora contacted the district to inquire about a parkway tree that he wished to remove as part of a landscaping project. He spoke with tree consultant Mary Kingman, and she subsequently inspected the tree. The tree was found to be healthy and structurally sound. Ms. Kingman concluded that the tree was not eligible for removal pursuant to policy, and Mr. Wixer was informed of that determination. Ms. Kingman explained that unauthorized removal of the tree would be illegal, but that he may appeal the determination regarding eligibility for removal to the Board. Ms. Kingman photographed the tree soon thereafter, and the photo is included with your agenda packet. No appeal of the determination had been filed. On May 15th, 2013, Ms. Kingman drove by the property, noticed that the tree had been removed. Our office also received a complaint from a resident as well regarding the removal of the tree. On May 23rd, consistent with our policy, the RCSD sent a demand letter notifying him of the violation of illegal tree removal, which included penalty charges for value of tree and cost for planting a new tree for a total of $6,259.80 due by June 25th. The value of the tree was determined by West Coast Arbor Risks Incorporated utilizing the International Society of Arboriculture Guidelines, which is also included in our policy. It should be noted that the value of a healthy, mature tree greatly exceeds the value of a newly planted tree. The district received no response as of the due date that was included with the notice. The parkway and median trees are within the district's jurisdiction, and they're governed by our policy number 3080. Pursuant to that policy, residents are prohibited from planting, trimming, or removing parkway or median trees. Removal of trees is only authorized under limited circumstances as set forth in the policy. Unauthorized removal of a parkway tree is punishable as a misdemeanor. In addition, the homeowner is required to pay the district the International Society of Arboriculture value of the removed tree and the cost of a replacement tree. At this point, I'd like to ask Mary to come to the podium and discuss how the value of that tree was determined.
Okay, so, all the trees in Rossmore are found in the inventory system maintained by our contract arborist, WCA, and this is updated by both them and myself. Information on each tree is shown, including a value for each tree. The method used to determine the value is taken from the guidelines of the International Society of Arboriculture, ISA. This method is known as the trunk formula method, and it's basically a mathematical formula containing several variables, including species rating, location rating, condition of tree, its size, and the cost for a replacement. And like I said, there's a lot of variables, and it is a pretty complex formula that's used.
And it's outlined in the very detailed guide...
Yes.
For Plant Appraisal, Ninth Edition.
And the values are already in the inventory system. We don't determine the values here in Rossmore. WCA, when they went through and inventoried our trees, they assigned the value to the trees based on this formula. So, that's how they're evaluated.
Oh, I was sharing with my...
That's, that's just showing the estimated value as from WCA, and I have confirmed with their manager that that is a direct link to the International Society of Arboriculture. Do you have any other questions for Mary?
Any questions for Mary, gentlemen?
Not right now.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
Bye.
Greg?
And I'm assuming this is Mr. and Mrs. Wixer?
Before the property owner speak, I'd just like to make one note about the procedure tonight. Normally, it's a two-step procedure.
Please state your name. Not everyone knows who you are.
Oh, I'm Greg Kavasovich, I'm the district council. Not normally here at the meeting, so in case you haven't seen me, that's why. It's normally a two-step procedure if there's a violation of the tree policy. In addition to pursuing the criminal remedy, prosecution for a misdemeanor, the civil side is generally manifested in the form of a notice and a demand letter. In the first instance, once staff is satisfied that there has been a violation, a notice and a demand letter will go out to the property owner, informing the property owner of the measures needed to cure or correct the violation. If a tree has been removed, and obviously, that can't be cured, then there is a fine, as Chris has stated, associated with it. The value of the tree is what the property owner is liable for, in addition to the cost of a new 24-inch box tree. If no response is received, or if the property owner refuses to cure or correct and/or pay the amount owed, then at that point, the board can authorize initiation of civil litigation to collect that money. Tonight, and in this case, staff felt it was best to bring this manner before the whole board, and the property owner expressed a desire as well to be able to come here and give their side of the events. This is an additional level of due process, if you will, that's not required by your policy. We're kind of going above and beyond by giving the property owner the notice, the opportunity to be heard by the full board tonight and to present their case.
Okay, thank you.
Go, yeah, go ahead.
Handouts, would you like me to give them to you, to the board, or may I take them up there?
We just have some pictures.
Okay. Bring them on up.
Let me begin by saying that this has been a longstanding problem that has been going on for over three years, way before we decided to landscape our front yard. The roots of the tree, a liquid amber, were causing the sidewalk to apex. We were afraid that someone was going to get hurt and sue us. We live on an extremely busy street. The first thing that we did over three years ago was contact the RCSD, and we were referred to the county. We called the county four times in over three years. We were promised that they would take care of the problem. They came out numerous times, I would come home from work, and we'd have different colored, you know, spray paint on either side of the sidewalk, nothing would happen. We would call again, we were told we would be going to phase two, then we were told it would be phase three, and then phase four. So, finally, we contacted the RCSD again, and we were put in touch with Ms. Kingman, who came out. Unfortunately, when Ms. Kingman came out, neither myself nor my husband were there, and I don't believe that the issues of liability and damage to our property were really properly addressed. And although she told us that the tree was healthy and not damaged, it was causing an extraordinary amount of damage. So, we requested to speak to a supervisor, and we were referred to Ms. Montana. My husband called Ms. Montana and left a message, and we were never contacted. Our landscaper at this time told us that he cannot guarantee the work because of the damage that the roots are causing from the tree. You can see in the second picture that he took out 1,000 pounds of roots, and we know that because they had to be weighed, and that was from under the sidewalk alone. And you can also see, if you can look in one of those roots, that our PVC sprinkler pipe is embedded in that. I want you to know that we do understand your authority. However, three years of trying to do the right thing led us to the decision that we made, and we are sorry that it got to this point. In order to rectify things, we contacted the Orange County Public Works. We filled out all the paperwork, we did diagrams, drawings, and pictures, and we were issued an encroachment permit stating that we had the right to remove the tree, plant replacement trees, and also to replace the damaged sidewalk, and you'll see there's a picture of that also. In addition, Mr. Thomas Webb has signed off on the trees, stating that they are approved trees by the county. And my husband has copies of those permits too, if you would like to see it. Let me get my copy. It was given to us retroactively, and it was issued on 8/2/2013.
But wasn't the tree already removed?
Yes, it was.
Before that day?
It was, and everything that we showed the county, when we met with them, they basically agreed with us that was a liability issue, and we incurred all the costs of it, we replaced everything, they approved it all, they signed it off, and we paid our fee.
Greg, do you have one of these?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't.
You know what?
Do you have an extra one?
I'm sorry, I don't have an extra one.
You can have mine.
Liz, will you please give us that? Greg, thank you.
And may I continue, is that okay? Are you still looking? Okay.
No, I'm listening and reading, so.
I would like to say, on a personal note, that we love Rossmore, and who doesn't? But I grew up here in Rossmore. My parents were original owners, they bought in 1959. This may shock you, but I was the first graduating class from Lee School. All of us kids went from kindergarten to sixth grade, then on to Oak, and then on to La Salle. I moved away for over a decade, and then came back in the mid-'80s to raise my children here, and even then, it was a stretch. It was a little bit more expensive, but we wanted to move back here. We plan on being here many more years. We are grateful to you and the RCSD for what you do, the fact that you safeguard and beautify the community, and we do completely support that. Yes, we did remove one tree, but I want you to know that we planted seven. We planted two parkway trees and five on our property that are going to be beautiful. Based on the fact that there was no cost or expense to the RCSD, the county has issued us a permit, we increased our property value, as well as all of our neighbors and Rossmore as a whole, and we tried to do the right thing for several years, we are asking that the fee for the replacement tree, the value of the tree be rescinded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, gentlemen?
I would just like to ask district council about the next steps there, and, sorry if you didn't quite hear me, I'd like to ask district council about this retroactive permit that they received from the county. I mean, what does that mean right now?
Right, right. The county and the district both have jurisdiction over different things within the right-of-way. The district has jurisdiction over the types of trees that can be planted, all the powers of the county road commissioner that were given to the district when it was created. In order to do any work within the public right-of-way, you need an encroachment permit, which the county issues. So, the county authorizes the work with respect to removal of tree, can it be removed? What kind of tree can go in its place? Is it eligible for removal in the first place? That is all within the district's jurisdiction, not the county's. So, although it looks a little strange, there is concurrent jurisdiction in the right-of-way, but this encroachment permit from the county does not in any way right the violation of the district's policy. It just rights the wrong that was done vis-à-vis the county, doing work in the right-of-way without an encroachment permit. That was a violation of county ordinance. Now, they've corrected that violation. It doesn't correct the violation of the district's policy for illegal removal of the tree.
So, an additional question, what would you consider to be like the vulnerability of other members of our community going to the county and asking for a similar thing in terms of getting a permit, attempting to remove a tree, and having the process repeated all over again?
Right, but the county encroachment permit does not authorize the removal of certain trees. It's written that way, because it authorizes certain work. That's all the county is looking at, the nature of the work. They're not considering your policies, which also govern just as much, and that's not their purview, right? So, they're going to authorize work within the right-of-way.
Right.
There are two governing bodies that have jurisdiction, they would need to get a permit for both. It's not much different than a coastal jurisdiction, say, somebody who needs to go get a development permit from the city on the coast, and they also need to go to the Coastal Commission to permit the same exact development. Two bodies that have somewhat concurrent jurisdiction over the same things.
That's very good. And chances are, they would do both in order to accomplish their mission.
You would have to do both. In this case, if you go out without permission, just hypothetically, of course, if a resident goes out into the parkway and removes an established tree and plants a new one and replaces some sidewalk, that would not only be a violation of district policy if that tree was ineligible for removal, it would be a violation of county ordinance, because they've done work in the right-of-way without an encroachment permit. So, they've corrected the violation of county ordinance by getting an after-the-fact encroachment permit, which is not uncommon. The goal is compliance, after all, so you can get a permit after the fact before. But they haven't corrected the violation of district policy. So, to answer your question, they're two different things, although they're in the same geographic place, they're two very different things.
General Manager Montana, those, the trees that you folks planted, are they part of our district-approved tree list?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I actually have a question for the lieutenant. Can you please come up here? I am looking at your sheriff's report that is dated 6/24, and what I'm having a hard time is aligning the dates. So, did you sign off, this is one of your deputies, and then you signed the report?
Yes.
You didn't fill out the report, but one of your deputies did?
That's correct.
Okay. And all the dates on this report are accurate?
Those dates were conveyed by Ms. Montana, so, my deputy was never able to make contact with the Whiskers.
Okay. Okay, because what I'm seeing here is I'm seeing a multitude of dates of April 26th of a formal request being made by this party. of a formal request being made by this party and then being denied. And then on May 14th, a Rossmore neighbor reporting the crime. And then on 6/24, the date of this crime report. That's what I'm seeing here.
So the deputy actually initiated the report on the 24th?
Of June.
Yes.
But then I see this property permit, August 2nd, 2013. So the tree was already gone for months before this was put.
Retroactive permit is great, but saying it's retroactive.
It's retroactive, which...
It's just to be in compliance, not to...
Well, it just kind of seems like, excuse me, and this might be harsh, but it sounds like you're covering up things after the fact. I'm just going to say what appears to me is you wanted the tree gone. You asked, it was denied, and you willfully decided to do it, regardless of the history of three years and what happened. And reading the crime report, obviously, this is a misdemeanor crime. That's not our issue. That's the DA's to take up with you. But currently here, we've got definitely a bad situation that we have to address tonight, guys.
Well, let me say a couple of things. And it does appear that way. That certainly was not the case. My husband and I are good neighbors, good people, hard workers. This was an issue we have been dealing with for a long time. It wasn't done personally. It wasn't as if we were told not to take it out and we just said, "Well, we're just going to go ahead and do it anyways." And I would hope that you would not issue or do something like this by taking it personally. I know in April, Mrs. Minton was here, if you recall her. She lives right across the street. And she removed a tree, although she said that, you know, she didn't know that she could. She was sent a bill for over $3,000 for that tree. And it was that you settled with her for 180 to replace the tree. Well, we've incurred all of the fees. We fixed everything. The landscaping is beautiful. We did nothing to do it out of spite for anyone. We also have a responsibility and a right to safeguard our property and to improve our property. We tried to do the right thing and we're still trying to do the right thing, which is why we're here. We're longtime community members. I would certainly hope that we would be treated reasonably and fairly in regards to The home is beautiful. We've paid our fees. I hope that you would take all of those things into account.
Any questions, guys?
No more questions.
Alfred, do you have questions?
No, I have no questions, but I'm ready to frame a motion.
Okay. Bill, before you get to that, I'm just going to want to open it up, make sure everyone's there.
This is really difficult, obviously. I've been on the board for three years. And prior to General Manager Montana, Mr. Tabata was in those shoes. And we have monthly meetings and weekly meetings. And we've discussed trees before. And I don't recall ever seeing you at these meetings in the past, over the past three years. Have you folks been here a lot? I mean, we can go back in tape and see in the public forum, anybody can speak at any time.
And you know, honestly...
Have you ever been here before at these meetings?
We didn't know that.
Yeah, so because you haven't, it's real difficult right now because I look at these pictures and I see, fine. And then I see, beautiful. And I go, hmm. They just wanted beautiful. So they placed a call to a brand-new general manager who didn't call them back. They didn't get a response. They said, "Well, rip it out." Okay? That's what I'm seeing. But it's real difficult because I understand you've been here for a long time. I get this, right? But it's a very difficult position because we face this often.
It's difficult because you would like the cost...
Well, we face this often in the community. People, there was a great, there was a beautiful tree on Tiger Tail, a humongous tree. Just ripped right out in the middle of the day.
Is this done frequently? Do we have people in Rossmore ripping trees out? I just heard that we have...
It probably happens, I don't know. I just know it's a very delicate issue.
3,500 homes and three or so that don't have trees and everybody pretty much... Is it possible that people are going to go start ripping out? Anything's possible. Is it probable? Probably not. The $6,000 fee, to me, seems punitive. And if you're attaching punitive damages to punish us, you generally attach punitive damages when somebody has done something malicious or reckless and you don't want the behavior repeated.
I'm not an attorney, so I can't speak to punitive versus...
Well, I'm just saying I can guarantee...
Versus punitive damages. I'm going to have to default to somebody on that. I mean, I see a nice sheet with a bunch of numbers on it and it seems to make sense. I don't see any random punitive-associated fee associated. There's just, this is a very difficult situation that we're now...
Well, if the RCSD has not incurred any fees and according to 3080.83, it says that the appropriate legal remedies for the collection of damages in order to compensate the RCSD for all costs and expenses caused by the alleged violation of the policy. But the RCSD hasn't incurred any costs and expenses, so I guess I'm a little confused. And I know that had we just sent in a check for $6,000, that we wouldn't even be here. So I think I'm a little bit confused about that.
Let me ask a question regarding the Minton family that you just brought up.
I think she's referring to the lady who... She was an older lady and she said, she came to the board. She was approached by a landscaper, knocked on her door, asked if she'd like the tree removed, and she said, "Sure." She didn't realize what she was doing was wrong. Tree was removed. She received a letter. I think the difference in this case is that they asked if the tree could be removed. Mary Kingman informed them, "No, it cannot because it's a healthy tree," but it was removed anyway. And that's the difference between the two incidents.
Understood, but I guess legally, since she was ignorant of the law, that I guess that doesn't excuse her behavior, the Minton lady.
Correct.
I mean, I remember the name. I don't remember the circumstance.
Right, she came to the board to appeal the determination.
Right.
And the board decided in that incident that they would just charge her the cost for a new tree.
Admittedly, I'm not as cute as Mrs. Minton is, by the way. I understand that.
Not going there.
I look at the pictures you provided and unfortunately, the one that's most compelling is the one that's on the top of a beautiful, healthy tree. And I could kind of see if I was a graphic artist, I'm not. If I put that on your new house, why didn't you fight to save that tree? This was a beautiful tree.
You're right. You know what? And I loved it.
And it seems like it's a...
It's a liquid amber. And if you'll notice though, it doesn't even have a trunk. And the roots of the tree were tearing up our yard. They had gone under the sidewalk, up to our yard, and even to my neighbor's yard. So on the surface, I understand you're looking at a tree.
Yeah.
It's a liquid amber, although it looks very nice there. Like I said, if you look, it doesn't have a trunk. The roots were terrible. We would not have been able to have done anything to our property and keep that tree. And trust me, sir, if I could, I would have. It was a beautiful tree. It wasn't something that I wanted to rip out and I didn't do it, you know, to upset anybody or in retaliation for anything. Like I said, I bought this house in the mid-eighties. When my first husband and I separated, I worked seven days a week. I worked four jobs at one time to keep this house and to make the payments. And I made every single mortgage payment. I love it here. I love Rossmore. We're not going anywhere. That's why we're here talking to you, to try to get this worked out.
You know, I have, you understand that the $6,000, the way I read the $6,000 is for the tree that you removed. It's not, that cost associated was for the tree that you removed, the mature tree you removed and not the two you replaced. And had you removed a smaller one like you have now, that that cost would have been smaller, correct? Yes, okay.
But when Rossmore removes a tree and replaces it, it's costing them $180 and they're not replacing it with a 20 or 25-foot tree, correct?
And if that, to me, if that was the case, then my, I would imagine more people would remove trees if they knew, you know, I can get a brand-new, smaller tree for $179 or whatever. More people would take it upon themselves to remove the tree. So there's, you know, there's other, well, they could. If the only penalty would be $179, more people would be removing trees.
The issue is the root system. That's the issue with the tree. It had nothing to do with removing the tree to make our house more beautiful looking. Had to do with the roots. Those roots were from our landscaper over halfway up the front yard.
I can see them.
And they were about three inches in diameter still and still expanding. They'd gone underneath the sidewalk. Sidewalk is cracking, causing more of a liability issue. The pictures in that second picture are only what was underneath the sidewalk that had to be replaced, which is 1,000 pounds. We're talking probably a couple thousand pounds of roots just from that tree. You said earlier that liquid ambers have some trouble with the roots going down. Obviously, this tree had trouble with the roots going down. They're very superficial roots. The grass wasn't growing, sidewalk's coming up, next pub goes into the water meter. I'm surprised it didn't. So it's not the issue of the tree itself. We did love the tree, the color of the tree. The roots were the liability problem.
I would have left it otherwise.
Anyone else?
Nothing further.
Alfred, you were going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to frame a motion, but by my framing of this motion, I want to be clear on my part and I think on behalf of my colleagues, that this demand for the $6,259.80 is not because we're judging you to be malicious and/or any other means of describing your behavior. It's the value of the tree that's no longer available to the community. And we do have the jurisdiction to enforce regulation of trees and there was nothing wrong with the tree. I heard your explanation. If it's any consolation, I too had a similar tree worse situation in 1999 when I bought my house. These photographs you show tonight, you may say not do justice to what you view to be the root system on your lawn. But I can tell you the comparable photo of my residence in 1999 when I bought the residence would have what I would describe like veins in the back of your hand that were sticking out on the lawn. But I bought it with my eyes wide open and there was a process for the tree to be removed and not because it was causing damage to my lawn or my box, but it did impede at times the sewer, the drain system. What it had done is it lifted the curb and gutter. So that was a valid basis for the process to approve the removal of the tree, not because they really wanted it removed, because it impeded the water on the street from traveling from one end of the street down to the other because it slopes to the corner and goes out to the storm drain. So that was the reason why the tree was removed. And I understand the roots, but your lawn really doesn't appear to be damaged at all. In fact, what I described to be the root system on my lawn was quite disgusting, yet my lawn grew and we were able to mow the lawn with the mower. So I don't find that to be compelling, that the elevation of the sidewalk pales by comparison to hazardous situations. You know, the county's been very diligent to go around the community of Rossmore and to mark, raise sidewalks and to replace them. And to do their best that they could to root prune to reduce the level of the sidewalk when installing and pouring new sidewalks. Again, I'm not convinced even when the tree is removed and looking at a side view, that it is so elevated that it is hazardous.
They shaved it down. That was their solution, was just getting a concrete grinder to shave the apex down.
But nonetheless, the monies requested are for the replacement of the tree. If there were going to be, you know, punitive damages, that would be in a civil court where a court or a jury would find that there was intentional conduct on your part and you might say it was malicious, you just didn't give a rip, if we'll use that term as we hear on the street. But we're not doing that tonight. We're not making that finding. And given that you're familiar with the jurisdiction of the community, you did start here three years ago, it just seems like you just have decided to take it into your own hands. And so there has to be a consequence for the action. So my motion tonight is that this board receive the sheriff of Orange County Incident Crime Report, number one. Number two, that we receive the letter, which is part of our attachments this evening as well. Attachment two, which is the letter entitled Legal Tree Removal Letter, identifying the value of the tree of $6,259.80. It's got a foundation from the International Society of Garber's guidelines for that value of the tree. We have photos tonight as well. One of the first that was attached as well as what the panelists, you can say, submitted the very first one attached, which shows the full breadth of the tree in the photograph. And we have a policy that specifically 3080 that gives this jurisdiction to regulate trees, one to approve the removal of trees, trimming of the trees, safety trims. And it also very specific on nonvalid reasons for tree removal. And the panelists tonight have not brought a basis to fall under 3080.42, which is one of the valid reasons for removal of the tree. And lastly, I would state in conclusion that it appears that the incident that did occur on May 14 or May 15 of this year, it did occur and that at their direction. And as such, that there's been a violation of our policy and is also the government code identified in the Orange County Sheriff's Crime Report. Basically, it's a crime. You know, separate apart from my motion, one could say it's vandalism and one can say it's theft. And the level of each of those is a felony. In California, the penal code states that anything of vandalism over $400 is a felony. And that's the discretion the district attorney has to choose whether to elevate the matter to a felony or misdemeanor. For grand theft, it can be a grand theft misdemeanor or grand theft felony in the discretion of the prosecution. In California today, a theft of $950 or more is a felony. But again, it's a discretion of the prosecutor. So a crime has occurred irrespective of the government code section cited in the Incident Crime Report by the Orange County Sheriff. So that would be my motion that we be received and be seconded.
Before seconding it though, the amount that you said was 6,001...
$259.80. Did I mistake the value?
Well, no, no. That wasn't the value of the tree. That was with the planting of 179.80.
Oh, well, that should have been...
They did plant a tree, so we should waive that part. If you change your, to 6,080, I think you'd probably get a second.
Well, I don't have a quick mind here to do that. If you give me a moment, $179 off of this.
It's 6,080 for the value of the tree without the replacement cost.
Yeah, the replacement has been made.
All right, so if the motion is amended by myself to 6,080 for the value of the tree, that would be the new revision to that portion of the motion to have the value of the tree deemed at amount 6,080.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion?
May I ask you a question? Is there room for negotiation here, mediation?
Well, let's get a second on the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of voting for the motion as stated? All in favor of voting for the motion as stated, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed.
And just to clarify, that motion was to receive the report and to receive the letter?
The entirety of the motion was to receive the crime report, the letter from the arborist, the photos, the policy of the district, and to adopt the conclusion that a crime is committed commencement with the code section identified in the crime report.
Okay.
With a dollar value of $6,080.
Thank you.
That's the finding of the board.
So is there room for negotiation here, or mediation, or no? We don't, we don't try to negotiate or mediate, this is it?
Ma'am, from my point of view, the board corrected me in reducing the amount of the demand for the loss of the tree by the $179, which is the, the replacement tree that you paid for to install in your parkway area. Personally, I went along with it to pass the motion, but I, as part of the community, I'm at a tree that's worth $6,259.80. So from my point of view, there was a reduction.
And then in closing, I just wanna say one thing. So Mrs. Minton, who did not request permission to remove the tree, and did, was charged $180, and we attempted to do the right thing and request permission, and we removed the tree, and we are gonna be fined $6,000. Okay.
Those facts are different, ma'am. We've recited those already.
Okay, thank you.
Moving forward, we are now at item H2. This is a special event request for use of Rush Park for the annual School Ghoul 5K Run-Walk Event.
Mr. President and members of the board, last October 2012 was the first School Ghoul 5K Run-Walk Event. It was held at Rush Park and through the streets of Rossmore. A request has been made by the event coordinators to hold the event. The scope of the event includes a starting line at Rush Park, a walk slash run through Rossmore along Foster and Hedwig to Rossmore Park, and back to Rush Park where participants would cross the finish line, enjoy snacks, a vendor fair, and costume contents, contest. Event proceeds benefit all of the Los Alamos Unified School District schools. Prior to the request, our staff recently was made aware that the, of the new county permitting requirements for special events in Rossmore parks. The district took this opportunity to work with the county and the School Ghoul coordinators in order to gain knowledge of the county's permitting requirement process and to better gauge the cost for future district special events. Basically, the county has the jurisdiction over the streets, and the event will still have to pull a road encroachment permit from the county in order to proceed with their event. However, they have also requested a permit to use Rush Park, and our policy states that board approval is required for any events that begin before 8:00 a.m., and they're requesting use of Rush Park beginning at 7:00 a.m. in order to get set up. The event will include approximately 400 participants, several volunteers, carnival games, pancake breakfast, and a vendor fair, and the race route will be the same as it was in 2012. At this time, I recommend that you direct myself on how to proceed with the event request specifically for use of the park prior to 8:00 a.m.
Let me ask a question. Is, what is the reason that they're asking for this on a Sunday instead of a Saturday, which I think would be much more acceptable for an event like this?
Are the event coordinators in the audience?
Yeah, they are.
Oh, here we go.
Hi, Lori.
Hey, how are you? I'm Lori Beveridge, I'm the event coordinator for School Ghoul, and thank you last year for being our emcee.
No problem.
Yeah.
It was a great event, just so everyone knows.
Yeah.
Oh, it sounds like it.
I think one of the reasons was there's so much sports activity on Saturdays. There's a lot of soccer games, and, and so Gus Caniones, who's the race director, it's his brainchild, and the reason that he wanted to do this is, he wanted to bring the run back to Rossmore. It is such an awesome course. It goes from Rossmore, Rush Park to Rossmore Park and back. It is a perfect 5K between the parks. Tree-lined, talking a lot about trees this evening, and it, that's what makes it so appealing. And, but also, the community has been really wonderful with his son. His son has aplastic anemia, and so he wanted to give back, and so it was sort of twofold for him. But the reason for Sunday is because there's a lot of sports events, and a lot of kids wouldn't be able to come, and so he wanted to open it up so everybody could be a part of it. And we really try not to interfere with Calvary Chapel here, and one of the things that we do is we talk to the shops at Rossmore, they allowed us to use the back parking for our event. We have Boy Scouts out there directing people to park at the, the parking lot there.
Oh, for this year?
Yes, and last year we did that as well, and we're gonna do the same thing this year. And they stand at Seal Beach Boulevard and the Rossmore Town Center Street with the signs, and, and they're directing them over to the parking lot over there.
Because from what I read, last year, a lot of the parking was actually done right at Rush Park.
Yeah, they, there's.
And they, somehow they circumvented going to the proper area.
They circumvented, yes. Yeah, so there might be people that are within the community here that didn't come, like the people who came from outside the community, saw the signs and were able to park over there, but probably the people who were like, that live here, wanted to be closer maybe, and so parked along the.
Yeah, it's hard to control everything. I mean, if the lot's open and people know about it, they're gonna use it.
Yeah, and we, I personally put up barricades for the Calvary Chapel lot so that nobody would park at the, you know, where the, the church parking is.
Okay, that's a plus.
And then we had Boy Scouts there, too. So, and the Boy Scouts, they're, they're gonna be on hand again this year. Last year, they did the, the flag salute, and they also were on the course, and they're gonna be doing the pancake breakfast as well, so, yeah.
Somebody mentioned there's a vendor fair. How many vendors are we anticipating putting in the?
Um, right now, I've got about a dozen vendors, and maybe 10, 10 vendors, and just, there's a chiropractor that's gonna be here, there's gonna be somebody from Origami Owl, and, you know, people selling their, you know, their services, and, and there's also a lot of nonprofits that we're, we don't charge them. If they wanna come, friends of the, the library, they, they have a spot. And the youth center, they're gonna be here with, they're gonna have a little carnival game, so we wanted to open it up. We don't charge the, the nonprofits, so.
Okay.
And our fees are really fair for our vendors, so they, you know, it's.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple questions. School Ghoul Los Alamos is a 501(c)(3) organization, and it is a corporation or partnership or some entity under the Los Alamos Unified School District, is that correct?
Under the RRCA, which is the Roadrunners, Roadrunners of America, and they allow people to have, if they want to have a nonprofit and they wanna do an event and raise funds, we originally were gonna do it through one of the PTAs, and it just didn't work out. And so we went through the Roadrunners Club, and they allowed us to start our organization, and we met with Dr. Sherry Crop, and she's been wonderful about this, very supportive. In fact, she just did an email blast for us to all the schools, and we got a lot of great response from that.
So technically, then, it is not under the recognition and authority of the school?
No.
No.
It's not, but it, we have their approval.
Okay. Is there a requirement, Ms. Montana, for the applicant to provide any form of insurance for the use of the facilities during the course of running this, this event?
Yes, there is.
And we provided it.
They have provided adequate insurance.
All right.
Million-dollar certificate of liability.
All right. You, you understand that if there's something go wrong, God forbid, they're not looking at LAUSD, they're looking at?
Exactly, yeah.
And this, this is just really the first step, isn't it? You still have to get a permit from the county for use of the streets, correct?
Yeah, shutting down the streets is not an easy thing to do, and last year, we did it by the skin of our teeth because we got a late start, and we had to do the traffic engineering and all that, and they approved us. And we also, they have their certificate of liability as well, and the permits, and so the, it kinda mirrors what we go through with you guys a little bit. It's, you know, the, the permitting process, and, but there's a little more stringent.
I'm very familiar with hearing those comments.
Yeah. And I, and we've been, and we shared last year the experiences, and I, and I know that you guys were interested in what we were doing and what the, the process that we had to go through, and so I was copying you guys in the emails between Dean Capelletti and Doug Friedman, Sokar Kong at the county, and so we were kinda sharing information, and Emily's been really great about, you know, giving me some information of, you know, what, what you guys have been going through and kinda maneuvering our way around.
Ms. Beveridge, have there been some lessons learned since the first event that were in this, for this event, we've incorporated some of those caveats to make this better for this year?
Well, this year definitely started earlier, and the groundwork was laid last year for a lot, and, and as far as, for me, my biggest challenge was the road closure, and I did the, the traffic engineering schematic myself, and that, that was, that was tough because that had to be approved by the county engineer, the traffic engineer. And so, you know, I was crossing my fingers, and, but it was approved, shutting down the roads, getting the right barricading, making sure I had the staff to do it, that was my challenge. As far as the, the park, I thought I would have to have a special events permit, and that's expensive. We kept the scope of the event small enough to where we didn't have to, and that saved a lot of money. And also, the OCFA, they didn't require us to have their permit either, because the, the scope was, it was pretty much just a 5K, and it was very basic. We may have to change that this year because we, we wanna add some more. We wanna have more things for the community. There's non-runners who wanna be a part of the, this event, so we're doing a little, we call it the Ghoul Zone, and it's a little area for carnival games, and we're gonna have a little pumpkin patch. There's a free pumpkin to every participant, so we're gonna have pumpkins delivered. I don't know what the county's gonna do in that instance. They may say, well, we, we don't care about that. You know, if you have electricity that you're using or generators, I know that that's something that we have to.
But what I'm getting at is, was there anything so dramatic from the first event that you have to incorporate it in the second event, that you're sure that this new process is gonna be better?
Just the timing. It, it really went off without a hitch last year. I mean, it was, it, it went really well.
I didn't hear anything about it, I'm just asking, and since it's the second one.
So, well, that might be good.
I'm sure there's always refinement as we go along, you know, things are learned.
Yes, yeah, we're gonna refine as we go along, and, but it's, we didn't hear any complaints from, from anyone, and that, that no news was good news to us, and, and we really asked as many people as possible that were at the event, and also the, you know, the, the neighbors, what did you think of the event, what can we do to make it better next year? There were some suggestions from the, the expo vendors to be a little closer to the action, and, and we took that into consideration. The runners loved it, the residents, they had no complaints. They, we made sure the streets were pristine. We looked for every little piece of anything that was on the street. Might have been cleaner than, you know, after we went through it, so we wanted to make sure that, that there was zero impact, and so it's, when we're, that's our goal again this year. We wanna have this every year, and if we don't do it right, we won't be able to do that. So we wanna make sure every year that we do it right.
And I personally can attest, Jeffrey Rips and I both attended the event. His son, I think, came in third. But in general, it was a very well-organized. I agree, it's great to see another 5K in Rossmore. We used to have the schoolhouse run.
Right.
It's great for the schools, and you did a phenomenal job last year. You did not look like a rookie at it. You guys came off well poised. I think the church was, didn't hear any complaints. I think you did an outstanding job, and I'm glad that you're doing this fast again, and I look forward to you doing this for multiple years personally.
Awesome, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I have a motion that we approve the application.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
You're here.
Good luck.
Thank you. You guys come on.
First of all, I'd just like to say, we recently received some complaints from residents about signage being posted directly on the trees, and we found this nailed into our tree, and first of all, I just wanna thank the residents for reporting this type of activity, and remind everyone that, you know, putting big nails in trees just hurts them, and plus, it's against our policy, and I'd just like to advise anyone against doing such a thing. And also, you know, remind the community, even for garage sales, there's other wa, other ways to get the word out. Second of all, I just wanted to report to the board that as a commit, we did have a committee meeting regarding the Southern California Gas Poles. There was a presentation done last month, and so far, I believe that we've been successful in getting one of those moved out of the area of Rossmore, but the process is still ongoing. And then also, I'd like to remind everyone about the 20-hour full freeway closure for the bridge demolition, southbound I-405, affecting the eastbound Garden Grove Freeway, and that's from 9:00 p.m. Saturday to 5:00 p.m. Sunday, the 18th. So if you're planning to visit those areas, you might want to plan another route. And lastly, I'd like to remind everyone that at the end of, this is the end of our summertime movie series, and we'll be showing, very appropriately, the Lorax, and movies will start at dusk. And we've had a great turnout, and I hope to see a lot of people there. And that concludes my report.
Okay, board member items. I'll start with you, Alfred.
I was pleased last night, we had our rally here at Rossmore Park. There were a number of people in attendance, and I would encourage everyone who hasn't signed the petition, I don't have the website or the call letter specifically to call out tonight, maybe someone?
Actually, there's a link on our website.
Okay, there's a link on our website. I would encourage everyone who's a resident of Rossmore, inclusive of multiple persons living in the home who reside lawfully in Rossmore, to sign the petition if you oppose the expansion of the 405 freeway. It's important that we have each of you sound out through your provision of your name and the notification of your opposition. It will be noted by those who make the decision at OCTA, Orange County Transportation Authority, the number of residents of Rossmore that oppose it. We have technically over 10,000 residents, approximately 3,600 homes. There's nothing wrong with having, hopefully, 10,000 residents sign the petition. It makes a statement, and it's not just us, it's our neighbors to the south in Seal Beach that oppose it. They're directly impacted by the loss of real property. Fortunately, we're not impacted by the loss of real property, but we are indirectly affected by the collateral damage of the expansion of the freeway, such as noise, light, air pollution, and other matters that I may not be able to articulate as sophisticated as yourselves, or I'm sure you're well-read as much as I am, if not more. So it's real important that we continue to sound the opposition, even well after the deadline, to file a comment on the environmental impact report, which is recently deadline, to file a comment on the environmental impact report, which is recently published for review and comment. And I would also encourage, when the decision is to be made by Orange County Transportation Authority as to which option or alternate design they will elect to approve and fund, that if at all, if you can take some hours off from work or from your personal life to go to the Orange County Transportation Authority hearing and speak up, say, I'm resident from Rossmore, and I oppose any expansion of the freeway beyond perhaps alternate one, which you approved a year ago. There's no need to deviate from it. Properly handle the traffic flows projected with the adoption of alternate one, and there's no need to go beyond that. And if people repeatedly do that, you'd be surprised, the pressure it imposes upon the decision makers when they're sitting there, watching the faces and hearing the expressions of opposition, 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 and there isn't another part of the room that opens up and says, we're for it. In fact, if there will be, there'll be a minority number by comparison if we come out and oppose any decision they would make, other than for alternative one, design position one, or design option one. So that would be my piece tonight, and I hope they would sound well in years. And you make the sacrificing in carpool, find a neighbor, go with a stranger from Rossmore. We can hopefully convene here in the parking lot, van pool, car pool, make some friends, go there and do something unified, and show that we are unified, and we have a voice, and we don't just pay taxes and they get to spend it. We have a voice in how they spend the money. So thank you for listening.
Director Casey.
First, I'd like to thank Emily Gingras for all her hard work on our recreation, in our recreation department. It seems like with each and every event we have, either a movie or a band, the crowds get larger and larger, so you're obviously doing something very well. And secondly, based on a tight deadline of getting a lot of information to Caltrans, Henry Taboada and Chris Montana did a yeoman job of not only getting the presentation from the rally we had last evening, which I certainly hope is going to have some impact with them, but they also got the 600-plus signatures, whatever that number was, also transmitted with a tight deadline, so kudos to you. And lastly, I'd like to welcome our, the new member to our board, Mr. Tony DiMarco, and based on what I know of you so far, I think you'll be a very productive member of the Rossmore Board.
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening.
I would just like to state that the next OCTA meeting is Thursday, August 15th, at 9:00 AM, and it's located on, at 600 South Main Street, first floor in orange.
Will that be the hearing for the decision on the option?
You can.
No? Yes? Maybe?
What was the date again? Sorry, did?
August 15th.
It's coming Thursday. I think Mr. Taboada would like to add.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's a general meeting of the OCTA Board. They're not scheduled to make a decision on any alternative.
Okay.
But there will be discussion.
There certainly will be discussion, as was indicated last night by Councilmember, give me, from Westminster.
Oh, Diane Carey.
Diane Carey.
Yeah, she is monitoring all of these meetings, and it will keep us apprised of anything that we need to know about.
Right, because I don't think that's something that, like, I could attend. I think it's just the board itself, correct?
It's an open meeting.
It's an open meeting.
Oh, it is?
It's covered by the Brown Act. Anyone can attend an open meeting.
Is there any way, if in advance, to amend our website to note when the hearing actually is at OCTA, when they're going to make a decision, so that the residents could be informed by going to our website and plan to take the day off or the hours off to actually go? I mean, if we can get at least several weeks in advance notice on the website, put a banner up on the wall like we did for the rally, that gets people's attention. They'll make the time to go. I'll make the time to go. I'll take the hours off of work to go. But I'd like to have my colleagues and my neighbors go as well.
I probably can provide you with the tentative dates. I have everything that was current as of about two weeks ago, so I think I can supply you with that.
You can also go online and get their agendas and their minutes, just like any other agency.
Right, which brings me to one more thing. On the links that we have on our website, I know there's West County Connectors is on there, but there's not actually a link to the OCTA among the list that's there. Could we add that one?
Sure.
I think that would be very helpful, especially under the circumstances with what we're going through now. That's it.
Director Kaler.
You took your time. Oh, you didn't. I think I was through.
Yeah, I'm starting with you.
Then you can start with me. Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome Director DiMarco to the board. Your insights will be welcome, so, welcome board. And I'd also like to second Director Kaler's comments about signing the petition and about being active in expressing your voice in the 405 freeway toll lane discussion, as well as the widening and the expansion discussion. I couldn't have said it more eloquently, so thank you for that. Also want to thank the Orange County Sheriff's for letting me know about the free vacation check service. I was not aware of that. I think that's fantastic, two times a day. And I now have the correct number, so I can call the correct number, not the incorrect number. Maybe that was my problem before. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate the Los Sal Girl Softball, the 12 U team, they not only captured the California State Championship, but I read in the paper that they also captured the national championship as well, which was held in Peoria, Arizona, August 4th through 4th. So there's another national championship that goes to Rush Park, to Rossmore Park, and that's great for us as a community.
Yeah, awesome. World parade.
And that's all I have, so.
Director DiMarco.
Well, let's see, I survived my first meeting. Thank you, fellow directors, Mr. President, for the warm welcome today and the last several weeks. I want to also recognize and personally thank Mr. Jeffrey Rips, who I replaced, and want to thank him for the many years of dedicated service to this board. I also want to remind Rossmore residents that August 28th, school begins in our community, and to remember our speed limit of 25 miles an hour, and remember that our kids that walk to school typically in the first few days of school may not pay attention to crosswalks or stuff like that, just to keep an eye on the kids and our children.
That's it. I would like to welcome you on board one more time. Thank you for putting your name in the hat and for stepping up. And I also really want to thank the whole DiMarco family for supporting him. This does take time. There are impromptu meetings, and I want to thank you for supporting your husband as he helps the community. With that, and now that we have a full five-team in place, I would like to go over our committee assignments. So this year, I'm doing things a little different. We are, I'm going to announce them, but just so it's very clear, is I want everyone the opportunity for leadership potential. So on each committee, I'm going to designate a chairman, and everyone will have an opportunity there. First coming up is the Audit Committee. Tony, I'd like you to join me on that, and I will be the chairman of that. On the Budget Committee, Bill Kaler, I'd like you to chair that. And Ron Casey, I'd like you to sit on that committee as well. In the CIP Committee, Alfred, I'd like you to be on that board or on that committee. I will be on that committee and share it as well. On the Investment Committee, Tony, I would actually like you to chair that with Bill Kaler. The ISDOC representative, we'd like to maintain our consistency there, and have you had that up run?
Sure.
Mayor Consortium, that will be myself with you, Bill, as the alternate. I will continue on as the RCSD RHA liaison. For the Rossmore Advisory Committee, Alfred, I'd like you to chair that.
Okay.
And I will sit by your side. For the Shops at Rossmore Ad Hoc Committee, Ron, I would like you to chair that, and I will be by your side. Trees and Parkway Committee, Ron Casey, I'd like you to chair that with the help of Tony DiMarco on that committee. The WCC OCTA representative, you'll maintain that as well, Ron. Utility Ad Hoc Committee will stay as is, with Alfred chairing and Ron Casey being a member of that. And then the Parks and Facility Committee, Bill, I'd like you to be a part of that, and I will continue to chair that as well. So those are the new assignments. Elizabeth, if you can email that to everybody, so everyone has a hard copy in case people aren't fast-taking notes, or?
They have one on there.
Wow, you're really fast. Can't believe you do that so far. So that's it. Lastly, I actually prepared something, and I'd like Liz to put it up on PowerPoint. And I'll try to go through this quickly. I call it the RCSD in the news. We had two articles that were mentioned in our weekly freebies. This was the News Enterprise and The Sun that came out last week. And basically, what you see here is there, actually, that's not the first page. Is that the first page?
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay. As you can see, there's two different headlines. RCSD Needs to Address Parking Issue. And Rossmore Could Become the Equivalent of the Walmart of Public Parks. You have different guest columnists. One for the first long article by a guy named George Pardon, he's actually at Cypress, which is interesting. And then the other one, you might recognize that we have Gary Stewart, who is of Rossmore. Can you, any way you could take off that little exit box?
I'm afraid not. I had it converted to your different format.
Oh, wait, it's not. It went away, okay. So you have the two articles, but it's actually the same story, word for word, but just kind of rearranged. Next slide, please. All the parts that are circled are literally verbatim of word for word, so even though it's two articles, two different headlines, two different writers, it's actually the same writer. And normally with these type of articles, in fact, go to the next page. This isn't journalism. Just so you know, a good journalist would not just take any issue and just write an opinion on it. This is actually an op-ed or an opinion editorial. Journalists would actually call all parties involved. But I just thought, in transparency, I'd just at least do this. Again, if op-ed opinions, everyone has an opinion, I would never respond to those. But since it seems a coordinated effort, I thought at least I would give a response, and actually make it very factual. So basically, here's the subject. There was a parking analysis of Rush Park. The whole storyline is it was presented at the July RHA Board meeting. So what type of analysis? Was it an independent analysis? No. Was it a third-party audit that had to come in for some reason or another? No. Are we out of compliance so the county forced it? No. Is it biased? Well, it appears that way, but, you know, there's lots of biases out there. The author of the study is a guy named Van Zeitz. And who is this? He's actually a Rossmore Park neighbor. He's actually, I actually know Van. He's a good guy. I like Van. And when he saw an issue affecting his home, he went out and did an analysis. And this is his point of view on the analysis that he prepared. Interesting, he actually gave the same analysis to us about a year and, a year or so ago. So, next slide. So I thought I would just at least dissect the facts. The main thing on this article, and I took the one from the guy from Cypress, who, again, that's weird, but obviously, they pulled these quotes, called a pool quote, and it says, "RCSD has added and improved athletic facilities without providing off-street parking." And I'll be honest, that's absolutely 100% true. Our parks have drastically improved under the Board over the last three or four different terms. We take our parks seriously. And the main thing is, we've done this while maintaining our very limited green space. The fact is, our Rossmore Park open space ratio is woefully short, as one of our consultants told me, by a standard of 0.141 acres per 1,000 population. And by the way, statewide average is five acres per 1,000 population. So that statement is true. Next statement in that paragraph, the first paragraph, it says, "Almost every city near Rossmore does a better job of regulating parking and traffic around the public parks." And I'll be honest, there's some truth to that statement. But at the same time, there's no source or footnote. It's not like a fact fact, but there is truth here. But the main thing is, Rossmore is in the city, so from an RCSD point of view, we don't have the staffing or the authority to monitor traffic, parking, or have that police jurisdiction. But the interesting fact is, we want to help regulate the safety, traffic, and parking of our parks, and that's why we've been very vocal about our intent to apply for additional latent powers, which would include police, animal control, and trash. And the reason animal control kind of ties to it is, unfortunately, we have people who bring their pets to the parks without a leash. We have signs up, but unfortunately, there's not much we can do with it. But if we had both of those together, that would really be powerful to maintain safety of our parks. Next slide, please. Paragraph number three here, "The result is a highly congested and unsafe situation, seriously impacting homeowners." And there is some truth to that statement. We do have organized youth sports on our parks, only on Saturdays, outside of, you know, for game time. And I'm actually proud of that.
Part of the year.
For only part of the year. The gaps between the games, that's actually the hardest part, when you have three games on three fields on a particular park, the coming and going. And those who live in proximity to parks are absolutely affected. They live across the street from a park. People are going to park there. But some other facts is, we do have a new MOU that's been in place, our latest one since 2011. The games played at that particular park, where a lot of the commotions going on, has been reduced by 28%. And again, there's never, with this MOU, there's no Sunday games anymore. And the comment I really want to make here is, the RCSD takes all safety concerns seriously. And Bill, this is going to be our number-one topic for our newly-created ad hoc committee, and I would like to schedule that, if not this month, 1st of September. But please look at your calendar and give me some dates. Anytime that someone says safety, we have to take it seriously. And I agree, the in-between games, maybe we can come up with some ideas. So let's go to number four. "The situation not only impacts Rossmore Park, but also Rush Park, which is likely to get significantly worse, as other nearby cities in the Los Sal School District increase their park use fees for organized athletic groups." On this one, I'm going to call it out that this is false and misleading statement, because there wasn't a Rush Park parking analysis, so that's just commentary. However, the honest part is, is yes, other cities have raised their rates. So here's some facts, though. Recently, we have declined new permits by other youth sports that have come in here because we want to maintain the no-Sunday games. And we will review fees at the next appropriate review cycle. So Emily, I know that there is a legal process of when we can look on it, how we look at it. The next available opportunity, wherever that is, we'd like you to bring that to us. And maybe it is the next meeting. It feels about the right time, but we definitely need to always follow the legal, regulated process there. Next slide, please. Paragraph number five, "Rossmore Parks are at risk of becoming the Walmart of local parks." This one here, I'm going to say absolutely false, because here's the fact, this was a quote originally made by me, but altered. At the very first meeting we had on the parks and usage, I actually told the whole group there that the last thing we want is to be the Walmart of public parks. So that, those were my words. And I will fight hard to make sure that never happens. That's actually what I said, and then both articles throw in my Walmart quote. It's, I guess it's nice that, you know, they like my terminology and my phrasing, but that one, that one won't happen. We do have enough control of that. So number, let's go to the next page. Same paragraph, "The RCSD, some words, has stopped reserving picnic tables when softball leagues play." And that, again, that's true. But the whole article says that we're not regulating. This is actually one of the few things we can do to actually regulate the parks and try to keep it safe. So the biggest congestion where that ever becomes is full-season Saturdays, which are for a limited amount of weeks. And as mentioned, it's one of the few methods that actually we can use at our disposal for regulating parking, traffic and park use. However, those tables are still available. They're first come, first served, anyone who wants them on those days. Next slide, please. This seven is a lot of detail of the analysis itself. It says, "We have 58 parking spots at or along Rossmore." And then it compares and contrasts how we do not follow, and we're not in compliance with Long Beach City Codes. Well, more importantly, we're in full compliance with where we need to be as an Orange County city. city. We're not under Long Beach regulations or Los Alamitos or Seal Beach. We are independent. We're at Rossmore, so we don't have to follow what Long Beach does and I'm not sure sometimes that's the right thing to do, so. And also, we lack sufficient green open space to think of other parking solutions. And when you look at that article, again, I have to bring up this thing, is it really the right thing, as the song so says, "To pave paradise and put up a parking lot"? Really? I just don't really know if that's the right aspect or right direction to think of. Next slide. Eight, "The Homeowners Association has asked RCSD to address such concerns." This is false. The RHA Board has not contacted our Board or our staff on the issue. The RHA Board has not voted on any resolution issue or concern regarding our Rossmore Parks facility. And these statements have been verified by the RHA liaison to the RCSD. As I mentioned earlier, I'm the liaison between the parties and I have an equivalent. And we talked and he said, "No, this isn't an official RHA position." So that's a false statement as well. Section nine, same paragraph, "The Service District recently created a park policy committee but has so far not taken any action to address the issue." It's misleading and false. While there is a park committee, that part is true. At that first meeting, we had multiple issues that were brought and came to full closure. The MOU of, between the Girls Softball League, national champions, our park neighbors and the RCS, we verified that it's in full compliance. There's nobody defaulting. Park neighbor recommendation of reducing games at Rossmo Park, Rossmore Park, that was rejected because they were permitted to do plus 80 games and they came under 70, suggesting going down to 60-something games just made no sense, especially since signups haven't even started yet. And we also had an issue that we have old signage along the backstops that are old, but they carry the memories of these champions. So we decided to remove those, but we're going in its place, put up a nice plaque, so those permanent memories along the building in Rossmore Park will be preserved so kids from both past and future can come back to the park, relive their glory days. So those were good parts of the meeting. The other thing is Director Rips resigned. We've only had that one June meeting. We've been down one team player up until tonight, but now that we have our full team in place and a new appointee with Bill, I'm suggesting, and I would prefer August over September if our calendars can link up, that we can take that ad hoc committee and actually have a real working session where we roll up our sleeves, we go over policy, and we start at the 30,000-foot before we get down into the nitty-gritty. Last paragraph here, "A number of solutions exist. RCSD could build additional parking or limit the use of the parks by organized groups." Well, they say a number of solutions. To me, that's only two. And the first one of paving paradise and putting up a parking lot, I, again, really? Green open space is limited here. I think we should be treating that like gold. I think youth sports unfortunately is on decline with the economy. They tend to reduce games organically each year, which is sad, but luckily, the quality of the coaches, the quality of the kids, the instruction that they get for life is doing well to the point of a national championship. However, I think, I think there's more solutions than two. And that's why I'm counting on you to help me through this, Bill. And we will develop more and we'll review more and we'll get them vetted and we'll continue on. But since we're in the news, I just thought that from time to time, someone needs to dissect these, especially when they, it looks to be some kind of coordinated effort. But for what it is, again, I applaud Van for picking up and having initiative when he saw a problem in front of his house. But at the same time, we want to work with people and we have been working with people. And bottom line, I'll be very strong that I really don't want to sacrifice one square foot of grass or green space or open space for a parking lot personally, especially given the statistics. And if ever that came up, that would have to be almost voted and polled and get everyone's opinion, not just people who live across from the park, because the parks are everybody's parks. So that's it for the, the meeting tonight. We do have a close set, two closed-session items. After we meet with those closed sessions, we will come back and we will adjourn. Gentlemen?
If there's anyone who wishes to speak on the, or address the Board on the closed-session items before we adjourn the closed session, now is the time to do so.
Okay. Basically, we have two items. Anybody have a comment on? Do I have to tell them what the closed items are about?
No.
Okay.
Seeing nobody, we can adjourn and-
Okay, let's adjourn for our closed meeting. Thank you. We just had a closed session on two subjects. There are no reportable actions. Did I state that correctly?
You can give the report if you like.
Okay.
Approximately 9:40 PM, the Board adjourned closed session, suing government's closed session, 54956.9 subdivision D3 and 54957.6. Now, there were two items on the closed session agenda. Both were discussed and no reportable actions.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
No motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.